Raj to the board.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got a couple of housekeeping issues to take here first. Number one, we need to have elections for the, the board positions. I guess we'll start with the chair. I mean, I've got a couple of projects going on, so I'd like to remain as the chair.
Make a motion to point Bill Ambrosino as chairman of the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eric.
I want to be the vice chair.
Okay, so vice chair?
Yep.
Was Damon?
Was Damon, yeah, unless anybody wants it, we'll set Damon back.
I need to learn the ropes first.
Yeah.
Does that mean if you don't show up, you get elected?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion to maintain Damon as the vice chair?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and there's one more, it's the, actually two more. One's the liaison with CMR PC, which I've been doing for like fifteen years now. And those, I have the projects going on with them, so I'd like to remain.
Keep Bill Ambrosino as a CMR PC representative. This year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And last, uh, least I think, is it land use or?
Land use and community preservation.
Barry's been doing it for a while, I'm gonna continue Barry.
As well.
All right. The land use CPA. CP six, CPC, excuse me.
Land use and CPC.
And make a motion, we elect Barry to handle CPC and
And who second?
Land use? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. That being, uh, being said, that housekeeping is all. Now we got the minutes.
Make a motion, accept the minutes of five thirteen twenty-four as written. Wait, that was four twenty-two, wasn't it?
Can't vote on this.
Okay.
So you took the May one, right? May thirteenth?
Yeah, but the one we talked about was the twenty-second of March, right? April, right?
Okay, so I made one at a time.
So I made the motion for May thirteenth.
Okay, who second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I try not to second myself unless I, we need to, this is not a forum.
So did everybody get a chance to read the eighth?
I did.
And, and you have any question?
What did you change it to?
I changed it.
To spoke? The what? The spoke instead of spike?
Yeah.
I thought I changed, I thought I changed that.
Five plus five with the one I typed out.
Make a motion to approve the four twenty-two minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Onto the agenda. All right. This is, uh, twenty-five Cape Road, uh, I believe it's food truck. Uh, they're asking for a waiver for site plan review. Uh, everyone's gone up and
Yeah, Bill, Bill, following precedent that you guys have had in the past, I thought a site plan would be sufficient, at least to give you enough information on whether you need to have full site plan review or not.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, that's what I was figuring, we look at the, uh, look at the plan, if it's nothing out of order, we'll probably waive the full site plan review. Yeah, it's just the way, yeah, because food trucks don't have that type of impact, you know? Stormwater, something like that, this, all we like to do is make sure there's enough parking and moving together and all. All right. Oh, you've got the, yeah, we'll share this one, you don't need to. This is the one you want to look at. Okay. So I about let you take it, it looks like you, uh,
Uh, in this store, we have a deck that need to do doors, uh, you know, sliding door, we're gonna have the trailer there. It's a, it's a food trailer. It's custom made, it's, uh, very fancy, uh, total kitchen, and air-conditioned heated, uh, you know, this modern one. And we're gonna have seats outside. We took three parking for the trailer and we relocate them somewhere else, we relocate five parking. So the parking is enough.
We got two new spaces over here and three over here, okay?
Yeah.
Now, this is the building where the store is, right?
Where the store, the store is like thirty-five hundred square feet, so that is, uh, on the, when you enter, on the left side, there is a vacant area, we're gonna put salad bar there, inside, and outside, uh, we're gonna have the food trailer with some seats. Give you a better, better idea.
How far away is it from the pumps?
Uh, it's far. We look at the code when they did it, probably like sixty feet, uh, the chairs are sixty. Uh, so I think the, uh, the food trailer is even further. It's near where the dumpster is, I don't know if you're familiar. So this is, this is the deck, this is the store, this is where the food, uh, bar is, inside the store.
Yep.
And the food trailer is here, the pumps are located right here.
Yeah.
If you look at this picture. And we're over, over this, we're gonna have sale, like in case it's drizzling or raining. And, uh, this is currently the entrance over here, so the food trailer all the way down here.
Okay.
Um, pumps are way down there.
And it's all self-contained?
Yeah.
Not draining into anything or?
No, we're, we're not using anything in that trailer as far, we have hot water, we have the steaks and everything, uh, but we're not gonna use it like a bathroom, I don't know whether a bathroom, but we have bathrooms inside.
Okay.
It's the current use of the store? What's the current use of the store today?
What the current use of?
Store is convenience store.
Convenience store. The convenience store is over here. And, uh, currently now, this is all empty. So we're gonna have the food, because it's too big for a convenience store to fill it up with candy, you know?
And you have a small food area in there now, right?
We have permit for food inside, but I never sold it, you know, I never sold food.
Aye.
So we're gonna have here, it's a, it's a barbecue, the trailer, everything is going to be barbecue.
Okay, so this is gonna be all standalone?
I'm sorry?
So gonna be all standalone?
Yes.
Trailer itself?
Yeah.
All ready, where it says seasonal, are you removing it in the winter?
No, 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 we're not removing it, it's a, it's a trailer, and I'm gonna put it, and it's not going anywhere.
Okay. Who else?
Uh, what's your intent for like food waste disposals at?
Food waste?
Yeah.
Food waste, uh, if we have any, we're gonna put it in the dumpster. What else, uh, you know? Hopefully we don't waste food.
Yeah.
Okay, I hate waste.
Bill?
Yeah, Jay.
Um, I, I assume you're going to apply to the Board of Health for your food permit?
Yes, yes, I have the permit, but the Board of Health, and I don't have the permit, I filled the permit, they told me to come see you first.
Right.
And after, after, yes.
They're gonna dictate where your food waste goes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I actually am not very familiar with this, so I've been asking them a lot of questions, and, uh, we just do as we go, do it as we go.
They're becoming well-versed with food trucks, little by little, we all are.
Yeah, you, uh, Eric, you're probably is familiar with this area as I
I make ASCO every day.
Yeah. Other than getting my car washed, yeah, I don't get over there.
My stickers there.
But, uh,
Listen, every day I wanna eat, I always wonder what, where to go. Okay, this way, I just go downstairs.
The impact was
But we already have a permit for food in the store, is it just amending the permit to allow the trailer?
Yes, because the food in the store, uh, is to make like sandwiches or sell sandwiches, and we're not gonna have any cooking except the barbecue outside. Uh, so, so we're, we're not, uh, cooking anything inside, we preparing, roll meat or chicken or beef, and then we're gonna just barbecue it, make it into sandwiches.
With, um, looking at this and with, you know, no impact to stormwater or any other, uh, conservation or any issues of that, um, and it doesn't appear parking or traffic is gonna be a major issue there. Uh, I don't have a problem with waiving full site plan, I just think it'd be unnecessary.
Just one question, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, hey, could you just, I don't know familiar with it, but it's been a while, but the, just the entrance and the, and the exit for the lot and where
Okay.
It would be, it looks like the pumps are pretty close to the, to what you, kind of barriers there.
This is, uh, okay, the entrance, you have one entrance here.
I think he's driving.
I was looking at it the wrong way, I was looking at it.
And then we're gonna leave this door. Okay, on this thing, and the driver actually bring it down, it's here, this is the second end. This is the grid. So you go from this door, and you do the grid, so the grid is way back to the cars.
I was sorry, I was referring to the traffic, the cars coming in and out to the pumps.
The cars come this way on Long Beach, or some of them, they hit Rapid Street and they come into this.
I think the only tight spot you gotta think about is just the, uh, the full-service pumps that are on the, the far side. But, I mean, when you look at it, there's on the, uh, just, just below the seating area, that's where the existing stairs are, so I, I don't, I don't really think that that's much of an issue.
Okay.
Bill, not to interrupt, but I just got a text from Damon, he just got home and he's gonna log on.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Um, all right, uh, like I said, uh, I don't think it warrants full site plan review. So I think, uh, if I could have a motion to approve the waiver, uh, I think we can move forward with this.
Any concerns from you?
From me? No, no, none at all, I think that, I, I think food trucks are a vibrant part of a community and as long as it's in a good location, which this seems, uh, I'm fine with it.
Motion to approve the waiver for twenty-five Cape Road to accommodate a proposed food truck.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm done?
You are done, sir.
We will send a, a letter to the clerk and the building commissioner.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, sure.
And the Board of Health.
What's your plans? Got a barbecue next door to you, please. Something worth saying, I might start going down there.
You can go next door, get the munchies and then go get the
What's that? Oh, yes, okay, moving on, uh, everyone's got a copy of the drawing, yeah?
Yeah, what's going on with that?
It looks like they just, they changed a lot line on, on, um, lot twelve eight, if you look, chose a new property line. Um, hazard required square feet, hazard required frontage dimensionally, hazard required upland, six thousand square upland, which is required. Uh, so it's got frontage on a, on a approved road. Uh, so
So does the developer still have this or is this occupied?
Developer, this is, uh,
Right.
So let's crunch.
Yeah, this is, uh, right, yeah, off of North Ridge, way up in the back. Um, so, uh, I don't see any issues with the eighty-one P, unless anybody has any questions.
Nope.
Eric, on the eighty-one P, uh, food will not require.
Yeah.
It, all the board has to break out is that it is, it has all dimension, frontage, lot size, upland.
Right.
If it meets all that, automatically, that's why it's called an approval, not required.
Yeah. I got the only question I had was that this, the smaller section here that's outside of the new property line, it says not to be considered a building lot.
Yeah, cuz, cuz right now it dimensionally doesn't need any standards, so it can't be a building.
Is there anything that we need to do to designate it as such?
No, I, I, what I think will end up happening at some point will probably join lot eleven, I would think.
Um, to help with Eric, Eric, uh, we need that nomenclature on the plan, so it's recorded at the registry, so it can't be built on, so that's a good thing, not a bad thing.
Yeah.
All right, so if, uh, unless anybody's got anything further, I just need a motion?
Motion to approve the eighty-one P for, sorry.
Lot twelve A.
Lot twelve A.
Ross and Farm.
Ross and Farm, there we go. After the assist.
You'll get used to it. You haven't had a second yet.
Second.
Barry gave it a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, now that, now that we've
Eighty-one P?
Yeah, we got all this stuff, we're gonna have to
You can sign it after the meeting.
Who's the official stamper?
Yeah, we, we've got a, like, the new one.
That I can do.
Yeah, there you go. All right, uh, one other item on this is we also need to release this lot twelve A, so they can, uh, so they can build on it.
Um, I did, I did follow through an email from Jeff Walsh, who said he had no issue with this.
Okay.
Same lot we just approved, right?
Yeah, this is the one we just approved, they're looking for a release. So if I can have a motion to
Make a motion to release lot twelve A, Ross and Drive, Ross and Farm Drive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so that takes care of that order of business, but we just have to sign all this stuff.
Bill, while you do that, for Eric and maybe even for Jay, um, this, we have a bond and the board just upgraded the bond, I think at the last meeting or the meeting before. So we're protected and periodically developers will come in as they keep improving the road toward completion and asking to either reduce the bond or, and or release lots, and we slowly get to zero, and this one's taken years, but it's, it's getting there.
All right, yeah, they've got a little bit further to go, but they're almost getting there. It's a big project, fifty-nine houses.
Yeah, that's a, that's a biggie.
Um, what's in there? All right, Jessica Smith, site plan application.
Um, for the board, this is a, an existing childcare that the board approved since I've been here, so it's been at least two years, um, and now they wanna expand, this is not the hearing, this is just an introduction.
Oh.
Hello.
How are you? So that your nice little house in the back now?
Yes.
Yeah, came up yours.
Thank you.
At the what?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, just red, I'm like, thank you.
All right, now, yeah. Now I, I, I'll I'll give some explanation, they run a childcare in half a year, uh, at the beginning of Harford Avenue West. Yeah, I don't know if you're familiar with the old, that old red barn is, they just built the house behind it, just before, they own the prod, two properties next floor, two, right, you know, and the two house. Um, and they've been running childcare place out of there for years. Um, and, um, so why don't you explain what you wanna do now?
Okay, so, um, number ten has a family childcare, and we wanna expand to a large group. EEC requires us to get permission from the town, um, and we wanna go to fifteen children. Basically, we wanna do before and after school care and a summer camp at this one, at that number ten. Um, number eight has, is the one that has the twenty children that we're expanding, um, but this is number ten, um.
Number ten's the smaller house next door.
You do, 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 no, eight is the smaller.
Eight's, oh, eight's, you're right, eight's the smaller.
Yeah, so this is between the new one and number eight.
The one in the middle, okay.
Yes, um, so yeah, we just wanna expand and do before and after school care and a summer, summer camp there.
All right, how many more children?
So we're allowed ten right now at the large family daycare, we'd like to do fifteen, and they would be all school kids, so it'd be all children that are entering, um, kindergarten, sorry. Before and after school care could be kindergarten through, I think it's fourteen, but the summer camp would be children that are entering first grade. Through
I mean, obviously, we're not in charge of the number of children.
Right, that would be measurements in the
Is the impact on parking?
Yes.
Stuff like that.
Yeah.
Do you have ample parking to be able to additional five children?
I think we do, I mean, I, for the most part, it's been
I mean, I, I
We did, we added a little bit of driveway to it, um, it's been doing okay, um, it's a tough streak, cuz it's, people fly on it, but so far it's been good.
I live right down, I obviously live right down the street. And, um, I've never had an issue there, I've never, I very rarely see people coming in and out of, so, um, so I don't think it, additional five children are gonna be an issue with, with parking or traffic. Um, so, I mean, unless somebody can think of any additional issues that we've, they'd have, um,
Let's have a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, so because of the timing, since June, the summer camp, we already decided to set the hearing date, if you guys are okay with that date. Um,
What is it?
Seventeenth. It'll be natural, it's the tenth, I just wanna make sure when you guys make your vote, you're open for seventeen.
Well, with the next meeting, if they're ready for it.
Prepared on our, our side of things.
Yeah.
So we're good with that.
All right, well, uh, we need a motion just to set the
Make a motion, set the public hearing for, uh, what's the address? One, no, nope.
And Hartford East.
And half of that way.
And half of that west, but June seventeenth, six P M.
East?
Uh, it should be half of Avenue West. Yeah. That's her fault. It's half of Avenue West.
Going Oxbridge.
That's it, we're gonna put everything on June, yeah. All right, so, uh, public hearing, May seventeenth, I said, I mean, June seventeenth.
Seven page, now we have Jack, come to state.
Oh, Jack, she's throwing you right under the bus.
Wow.
Jack, she just threw you under the bus.
Yeah, I'm used to it. It is my bad, you know what it is, I work for Oxbridge and Hartford West is in Hartford, I, I thought Hartford East was all a London.
Um, all right, only, do they have a second on that?
I made the motion.
Second, I mean.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, public hearing is set for June seventeenth?
Yeah, seventeenth.
Awesome, thank you very much, you guys.
See you then.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so that takes care of that one, knocking these off one after the other. All right, we got a special permit site plan application for one north half. Gentlemen.
Who are you?
Not too bad. And there's another project, gentlemen.
Oh, are you, for the record, John Cusick with Boulder Engineering. So my understanding is we need to submit this at a hearing, so I'm, I'm here with the box of goodies, yeah.
Could have handed out a copy of the plan, just so we can look at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, uh, explain everything. I'll set the public hearing date. I usually, we have one in July, but if, um, if there's nothing pressing, cuz everyone's on vacation during that. Just study material. Make sure we get, uh, Gail, make sure we get all this stuff over to Jeff Walsh, if either that or have him
But, yeah, we're, we were asked to send that direct, so we're sending him the full, full package of that.
Bill, I sent him an electronic copy today, just, and I also engaged with MDM, our traffic consultant, I think, at this intersection, it's very important.
I agree. Is there any other here review that would need to be done, you think, uh, Jeff's engineering, traffic?
I don't think immediately, nothing comes to mind, but maybe during the hearing, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll deal with it as it comes up.
Yeah, and we've, we've met with, um, DOT, it's obviously gonna be important that we coordinate, so we've had a couple of meetings with them as well.
It goes to like page four, it's got a breakdown of the, the, uh, tire site.
Yeah, and I can just talk through it at a very high level, if you like.
It's in the box. We know it's gonna be
Hey, guys, sorry I'm late, this is Damon.
Hey, Damon. Yeah, any idea what he's looking at for retail? Does, does he, uh, any idea what the retail, additional retail building is gonna be?
Well, there, there are not any tenants situated yet, so I, I, I don't think we know who would be in there yet, but it would be
You would, uh, you would need to come back to the board to approve the use prior to filling that building. Right. All right. Looking out for a date? Yeah, what date are you looking for?
I suggested either the eighth or the fifteenth of July, but I don't know what people's schedules are.
I would go for the fifteenth, I don't think you wanna be in the yeah, I don't think you wanna be in the first couple of weeks of July, that's
Yeah, I'm vacation. I will be out until the tenth.
All right.
So, so we'll pick I will be back till fifteen.
No, the seventeenth would be good. Oh, no, they wanna go out to July.
Pay for twice and all that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she needs you gotta be able to get advertised twice, so it's, uh, you need three weeks. Um, so
July fifteenth?
July fifteenth.
All right, make a motion to set the public hearing for one north there for July fifteenth, six P M.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Damon, aye.
Uh, Gail, let's make sure, or Dylan or somebody, make sure all the department heads get this.
Yep.
Well, we have a question, Bill.
Sure, hand up Brendan, Brendan, go ahead.
Hello, Brendan Chanel sixteen Washington Street, uh, when the documents are available for the, um, for the public hearing, is it okay if they get posted on that public share, so that online participants can take a look?
Sure. We can
Awesome.
We can get those up there.
Yeah, we just got them this afternoon, Brendan.
Yeah, we, we
Yeah, understood.
Put them up there to the public.
Yep, I, I know, I just felt like I should ask, thanks, appreciate it.
All right. Guys are all set until
Thank you very much.
July fifteenth, see you then.
Thank you all.
Give this stuff to Gail for the meeting.
By the way, Bill and the board, uh, that will be Gail's last meeting. By the way, Bill and the board, uh, that will be Gail's last meeting.
Oh, we'll, we'll have to take her out to dinner after.
Wow. You have to think about where you wanna go, Gail.
Yeah, that eighty-one P back there. Did, uh, not, not yet, that was almost.
Gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, it's the most important motion, motion to adjourn.
We got, yeah, we got.
So we got.
Sign the eighty-one P.
Yeah.
Oh, we already did that one.
Alright, so.
That's it, we're all done. All of them signatures.
Um, Dylan or Gail, um, we gotta make sure the registry gets, um, Eric Hodges' signature.
Yep.
Oh, look at that, you already did it, jeez. I'm a figurehead.
Barry's, I need your, your signature.
You don't have my signature after all these years?
You have to do it every year.
Uh, why it's changed?
After, after the election, every, uh. Is the meeting adjourned?
It's on the floor.
Need every copy of that, that's.
Yeah, everybody's for, um, it's still on the floor, yeah.
Before may you still take it to sign.
Is the meeting adjourned?
No, I guess not.
Okay. They'll have enough.
They'll have enough signatures on that, Jack, I'm sure, I'm assuming.
Okay. I had them in order, it's.
You put the second page. In science. What?
Yes.
Oh, Jack, are you going to, uh, mention to Bill about that, Bill, from tech?
No, I, I'll take care of it.
Okay, oh, well, I had mentioned it to, to Bill about it.
You have?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, Bill, we got an outstanding bill. I talked to the applicant. He supposedly was gonna pay it, he hasn't. I'm gonna take one more shot and then send John Erickson there.
Jack, who's the applicant?
It's, um, well, his name is Sullivan, Todd Sullivan. Um, it's the cannabis place on Milford.
The one, the one down on Route six, the one on, uh, the old Taylor rental or the one on the other, on the other end of town?
Other end.
Okay. I just was wondering if I maybe knew him or somebody that I could contact to help out, but I don't know either one of those people.
I'll tell you, I, I'm still on this, but, um, hey, if he doesn't wanna pay it, then he might not be in business.
Yeah. That place is.
You need to please come in and sign the list registry of deeds form for me tomorrow.
Okay, I'll come see you.
I can bail it out right away.
Thank you. Is the meeting still going or are you adjourned?
Yes, you're signing the eighty-one P.
Okay.
As long as they sign my last.
Dylan, you in Mendon again tomorrow? For all the fun? We'll just need a letter to Ellen about the waiving of site plan review and make sure the Board of Health and John Erickson are C C.
Alright, motion will adjourn. We need a second. Damon, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, we already did that. We need a second.
I'll set, well, I thought you asked me to make a motion. I'm sorry. Sorry, I wasn't there, guys. I had a late day. I'll, uh, catch you on the next one. Thank you very much. Bill, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Alright. Give me, give me a ring.
Are we done?
We are done.
Did we second it?
Oh, that's right, we needed, yeah, Damon seconded it.
I seconded the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you, guys. Congratulations, Eric.